I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:18 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, in Millville, Massachusetts. And let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we jump into the agenda, just introductions.
Roland Barrett, member of the EOS. Richard Ramos.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Okay. So, for new business, we have the Stephen B. Furno Retirement Proclamations, including from Representative Soder, who has kindly joined us tonight. Representative Soder, I'll let you go first.
Am I okay to sit up?
Yes.
Steve, would you come up and join me?
It's a great honor to be here tonight with you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's very unusual in this day and era in time, public safety having 34 years. And public safety, and I have to do a lot of these over the last couple of months between police and fire in the different parts of the communities and the towns. And just with so many different regulations, so many different changes, and trying to keep up with everything, many are not going into the public safety field like they used to. And you're a testament to what not only a true firefighter is, but what a good public servant is, and dedicated. And I know you still are keeping yourself busy training all the young guys, and men and women, and the future of the firefighters that are going to serve our communities. Hopefully, some of them through here, and they get your training and your dedication. I want to honor you tonight and be here to honor your official retirement day. I know it was back in June. So, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be here known to all. At the Massachusetts House of Representatives offices and service, congratulations to Deputy Chief Stephen Furno, in recognition of your 34 years of dedicated service to the Millville Fire Department and the town of Millville. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses its hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, giving this the 30th day of June 2023, which was your official retirement date. The State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and signed by Michael J. Soder, your state representative. And Steve, I just want to tell you personally, thank you for being a great friend, somebody I could pick up the phone and call. You're never afraid to ask for stuff, and that's the way I wanted it to be when I came in into Millville. And I appreciate you working with me in my few years that I've had here, and maybe a few more, but I know you'll keep me busy and tell me what Millville needs, and you'll make sure of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Did you guys, you're all set?
Yeah, we have our.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Great. So, Steve, if you want to take a seat in the hot seat. So, you have a couple more to do. So, I'm going to read this one, and then I'll make a motion to approve it. So, this is a proclamation of appreciation to Stephen B. Furno, whereas Stephen B. Furno has served over 34 years as a Millville firefighter/EMT, put the safety of others ahead of his own, assisted, saved, and helped birth numerous lives, fought fires with great skill in Millville and neighboring towns, provided leadership within the fire department, served many positions, including deputy chief at the time of his retirement. The Millville Board of Selectmen would like to express their sincere appreciation for the many years Stephen B. Furno has served the Millville community. Signed this 5th day of September 2023. So, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Sounds like it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland? Okay.
I would, I will say, I remember Steve 34 years ago.
Did he have hair? A little bit.
The first time I met Steve, I was, I was just starting to cut trees, clear land, to build my house, and the fire might have got a little out of control, and that's how I met Steve. So, but yeah, every, every run-in I had with Steve, my in-laws, my father-in-law's now passed, but it was like a weekly visit with the ambulance, and Steve was always right there, very professional. Karen, his wife, was, was there a few times to help out, and the whole Millville Fire Department has always been extremely passionate to my in-laws, who I care very dearly for, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. So, it's a vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Perfect. So, it's a vote. And then... We have one more. So, Chief Lillard was called away on a family emergency, but this says, "The Commonwealth of, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Fire Service Commission presents the Massachusetts Firefighter Service Award to Deputy Chief Stephen B. Furno of the Millville Fire Department in grateful appreciation and recognition of your 30 years of dedicated fire service as a career firefighter on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts this 30th day of June 2023." So, again, the official retirement date. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve, what a time for you.
I appreciate it.
Looks good.
Thanks. Congrats. Enjoy your retirement.
You're right, Steve.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a group picture? Are you okay? It's up to whoever. Nope, we're good. Okay. Yes, that is, you can leave whenever you like.
I'll let you guys have the rest of your discussion without me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Thank you. Okay. So, next on the agenda is appointment of planning board member Justin Allen as fiscal year '24 CMRPC alternate delegate. So, and there's an email in your packets. And I believe that Justin Allen is already on.
So, he's on the planning board. The planning board is required to submit a delegate, and they've appointed a delegate to the CMRPC, and an alternate delegate they recommend to the board of selectmen who appoints the alternate, and he is a member of the planning board.
Okay. So, and I see Justin isn't with us here tonight, but as he's already on the board, I feel comfortable appointing him, but, okay. So, looking for a motion?
I'll do it. All right. I have at it. All right. I, I motion to appoint Justin Allen as alternate delegate for the CMRPC for FY '24.
Looking for a second? Thank you, Richard. It's kind of easy to know your role, right?
I like the second thing.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right. Thank you, Justin. Okay, special town meeting planning. So, the first thing to do is to set the date. And if I recall correctly, a date that was requested is November 1st. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Jackie?
Jackie knows.
November 1st? Okay. Perfect. No, it's okay.
Which is on Wednesday.
That's, it is a Wednesday?
Yep.
The day after Halloween. So, there'll be plenty of candy. Um, does, do, does anyone here have a problem with that date? I don't have a problem with that date. Okay.
We'll make it work.
So, I will make a motion to set the special town meeting date as November 1st, 2023. Looking for a second?
Second.
Roland beat you.
Roland beat me. That's fair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay.
Can I ask a question regarding special town meeting with the current situation with the Millville Elementary School? Does the board envision holding the special town meeting at Millville Elementary? Will it be safe to hold it there, or are we considering...
Yes, because I understand the school is available for purposes like that. Just have to submit a request to the school committee for approval. I think I saw that at your last meeting.
Perfect. Just wanted to double check and make sure that's going to be kosher.
Okay. Okay. And then set warrant opening and closing dates. So, working backwards from the November 1st date, I am cheating, and Peter told me this earlier, so that's how I know, the 10/18 is when the warrant needs to be posted by. So, today's the 5th.
So, we want, we would have a meeting on the 16th to, to vote to close it.
Right, to finalize it. So, you have a meeting on the 2nd, scheduled on the 2nd, and the 16th of October. So, by the, ideally by the 2nd, you're looking at drafts of a warrant, which, so that's why you want to close it hopefully before then.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so I think we'd want to close it by the 2nd, so on the 16th, we could vote on things. Otherwise, we have to have another meeting on either the 23rd or the 30th.
And, and I would recommend you close it on the 27th, actually. That's the Wednesday before of this month.
I guess one, two.
And that provides a little time.
Over three weeks.
Yeah, that's over three weeks from opening, and tomorrow, if you open it tonight, for example, I would send out to all the department heads and interested parties, committee folks to, for a warrant request form, and, and it's open until the 27th. That's plenty of time for folks to act on that.
Okay.
With information.
We'll have to reach out to the constable to post that.
That's correct.
Okay. So, we, um, I will make a motion to set the warrant opening date as September 5th, 2023, with a closing date of September 27th at 5:00 PM, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. So, it's open now, and we'll close 9:27, 5:00 PM. All right. So, consideration of potential warrant articles. So, Peter, do you mind if I flip this over to you? I think you had the full...
Sure. So, I just have a handful that, to anticipate, right? So, some are the standard boilerplate that, you know, the finance committee, you know, recommends that to the extent you move to change something, you, you've got to provide a funding source, that sort of thing. Prior-year bills, if there are any, any budget adjustments, to the extent that some are deemed necessary. There will likely be one on the, for the Board of Health. We have a Board of Health member who's also acting as an agent, and technically, according to council, there should be a warrant approved by the voters to enable him to be acting as an agent. So, that would be more of a housekeeping type of thing, but it would be on there. And then, of course, the feasibility study, which is the primary driving things, and I, I see we have folks conversant, more conversant on that matter, but that would be the, the big, the, the main, the big event of the evening, I would imagine. And whatever else comes in, which we don't know at this point.
So, at the next meeting, if the Board of Selectmen wanted to propose any more articles, we'd have to have those ready to approve by the next...
That would be helpful. Yes. Yes. Particularly if you're moving the meeting.
sooner than later, for sure.
So, other than the ones that Peter mentioned, does anyone anticipate any other? No?
No.
Okay.
Just typical special one, which...
Yes.
Planning board.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to have anything, but they, they may, and, you know, that would be coming out of when I send that out to planning board tomorrow.
They've been working on updating some of the planning and zoning bylaws.
Okay. So, Peter, you would do the one for prior-year bills?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, then, I don't, maybe we can have another discussion at the next meeting, but I don't think the Board of Selectmen would have any other recommendations. I can't think of anything. Okay. All right. Well, moving on. So, Public Safety Committee, so appointment of a police and fire department representatives. So, we have our list. Richard, I know this was kind of your idea. Do you want to talk about it a little bit? Am I putting you on the spot?
No. Well, payback, I suppose, right?
No. We'd never do that.
Public Safety Committee is aimed to try to improve some of the staffing needs, and I guess overall obstacles that both departments are kind of dealing with here in Millville, although some of those, some of those issues are kind of nationwide, but we'll try to deal with them here at, at our level. So, I believe we've already appointed the selectman representative, which is me, both chiefs, and we're going to appoint the police officer, the firefighter, and we have one citizen here today? Maybe no? Do we have a citizen here?
No. So, the citizen is also a firefighter, so it was which one or the other, and they're recommended by Chief Lillard.
Okay.
As we know.
And we need one more volunteer.
One more volunteer from the...
Anybody here? Possibly? No? I tried. Lower out there. So, that's basically the board.
Okay.
So, I'm comfortable appointing the folks that have been recommended.
Okay. So, just to, I'll read off, so the recommendations. So, the selectman representative is Richard Brenlis, and he was appointed on July 10th. Our police department representative is Chief Coop, and he was also appointed on July 10th. The recommendations for Stephen LaCava to be appointed tonight, and then it's a citizen opening for anyone who would like to be a part of this. And then for the fire department representatives, we have Chief Roy Lillard. He was appointed on July 10th. Joseph Gibbo, I hope I'm saying that correctly, to be appointed on September 5th, and Gregory Gomes as a citizen to be also appointed on September 5th. So, looking for a motion to appoint the positions as read.
I'll make the motion to appoint the positions as read.
Thank you, Richard. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right. Great.
I suppose we should mention if anybody in the audience wants to volunteer, you know, we would be happy to consider.
Okay. So, any other status update or discussion?
Nothing regarding this, no.
Okay. So, old business, I'll work on MES water status and update. And before we jump in, I just wanted to read a statement, and I'm very happy that there are members of the school committee here in Dr. DeFalco. I really appreciate you all coming. I know it was probably short-ish notice, but moving forward, I've asked Peter to send an email to the chair and Dr. DeFalco to let you know our schedule of upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting, because we will have a water update on the agenda at every single meeting moving forward. So, if you want to have a liaison, come. If you want to post a meeting, maybe communicate a little bit better than I did last week. Let Peter know we're going to post a meeting and attend and be involved, but certainly you're all invited. So, thank you for coming tonight. So, first, I wanted to correct an error from the meeting on August 31st. I stated that the Board of Selectmen did not vote on the open meeting law violation. That's not correct. We voted on it in executive session, and it was in the letter on August, that was sent on August 14th. So, I'm sorry that happened. The only thing I can do is point out my mistake and correct it, so that's what I am doing today. Um, there was some discussion, like around having children in elementary school. So, I did have kids at MES from 2012 to 2021. I just wanted people to know that. And there was a lot of discussion on water bills. So, when I joined the Board of Selectmen in 2020, the precedent was set with the entire board prior to that. I think it was in 2019, Peter mentioned. Anything under $25,000 is considered an operational expense, according to the regional agreement, and to be paid by the school district. However, also mentioned in that letter is we're open to having a discussion with the school committee on that issue. Um, fourth, I think there's a feeling that nothing is happening with the water, and the opposite is really true. When we got that resignation on July 27th, the next, no, 26th, 26th, Peter started the next day, like calling and trying to, and pulling together water operations team and making sure we had people in place. And so, we've been working very hard on this issue, and even since the May 2023 issue, May 2023 meeting. I know that the results weren't what people expected to see or hoped to see, but we have been working really hard. And as many as did, this has been an ongoing issue for a few years, maybe even many years, and it's going to take some time to resolve, but we're committed to doing that. We're going to fix this. And then finally, I just want to say, I'm, I feel badly for how this has all unfolded, and I want to say I'm sorry for that. I did not want to be too provocative on August 31st, which is why I didn't share all of this last week, and I wasn't as prepared as I am now. But I want to assure the community that we are working on this, and we're working as hard as we can, as quickly as we can, to resolve this, and we're committed to resolve this. You'll find that sometimes I say a little less on this, it's because I'm not a water expert. I feel like I've learned some things, but I don't want to say something that's wrong, because I've already done that once, so I don't need to do it again. And really, finally, I guess I just wanted to ask, like, we are really working hard to resolve this. I think one thing that Peter and I talk about, because we both come from the private sector, and the private sector, things can move faster than they can in a municipality, and I, it's unfortunate, it's, it can be frustrating at times, but we are working very hard to resolve this as quickly as we can. So, that's what I wanted to say, and I didn't know if Richard or Roland had anything else to add.
I didn't know if we could touch upon a couple things, and I learned a couple things the last school meeting, too. So, I'm, I'm kind of curious. I mean, so you, there's, there's a letter documenting that the water was an operational expense. Is that, is that my understanding, back from 2021? Like, how do we determine whether or not it's the landlord or the tenant's responsibility? There's a hand being raised in the back, but I know I'm kind of innocent.
If you want to come up, that's fine.
I'm kind of curious how this relationship, or how our understanding came to be, that this is the way it is. I'm a little confused, and I, I think the public is as well.
So, who are you asking?
Well, anybody, anybody that knows.
My take, just from the prior perspective, is just reading the regional agreement when I came into Millville, and the lease agreement, it specifies the definition of operating costs. We talked about that at the lengthy meeting where I read the sections, and we talked about it with council, which got into the letter, as you saw, that was sent to the school. So, it's an interpretation of the regional agreement, which I asked about, council opined on back in 2019, reiterated again recently. So, that hasn't always been the practice, per se, nor have we, on the regular sort of treatment of the water system, we haven't put those bills to BMR. We have put the outside-of-the-normal-operating types of things that fall below the $25,000 threshold, as defined in the regional agreement, agreed to by all parties involved. So, I, we did attempt to have some conversations about this, to get to some meeting of the minds of all parties involved, and then at your last meeting, I did ask for your guidance on this, and your guidance was to follow the regional agreement, which says definition of operating costs. Now, the former chair may differ on that, and I certainly respect her differing opinion. So, I think you need to hear, you know, how she would view that thing, because she was very active in the regional agreement revision, that, you know, revised regional agreement.
I think that's one of the biggest points of contention and confusion, especially with Facebook. You know, you see a lot of posts.
But, but I also want to just say that the payment of the items is separate from the operations of the water system and getting to potable water without nasty notices having to go out, which is a different objective, but...
So, I assume she's going to answer...
Not all of your questions.
Part of my question. I, I have a lot of questions now, because I'm like, I don't know, I really want to define who owns this thing, and I think that's like the first step to identifying how we move forward.
I can answer part of that question.
Okay.
That's okay. Okay. So, I'm Jane Reggio. I live at 7 Diana Circle at Millville. I don't have any responsibilities with the Board of Selectmen, nor with the school committee at this point in time, but I do have a little bit of history about the water system, and the history that I have dates back to the time that Helen Coffin was the executive secretary of the district. In 2010, the current system was installed. So, in 2010, the green sand filtration system was installed, and it was validated for operation in 2011. In 2012, there were issues due to inadequate pre-oxidation chemical feed dosages. And so, at that time, in 2012, 13 and 2014, an action plan was created. The action plan was followed through, different chemicals were added, chlorine was added to the system, we started getting different readings, but each time, a new action plan was created with DEP and the town, because the law states, "The owner of the public water system is defined as the legal owner of the property on which the water system components reside." So, who is ultimately responsible for the water system? The town, because the town owns the property on which the well and the water systems reside. And so, the question, and so I have a whole history here, because Jennifer made two comments. One was that there was a lot of fear mongering, like this water unsafe, whatever. That history dates back to well before 2010. And if you are a parent, and I'll state the caveat, that as a parent of an elementary school's child, my daughter never drank the water in the school, whether it was perfectly safe and tested perfectly fine, or whether it, it tested poorly, because that impression has been since before my daughter was there in 2008 in, in preschool. So, that impression has never left. What has changed over time, which was the other question that you said, well, what's the difference now? The difference now, and I, I have a lot of documentation, but you all would have it more, because there's documentation from Helen Coffin, there's documentation from Jen Callahan, and there's documentation with Peter. But every time there was a poor test, it resulted in an action plan, and that action plan was followed. Since 2019, when it's resulted in action plans, it's been things like, "We will study, we will consider, we will think about," and there's not been active changes. The, and I call it pomegranate, but the pro-maganate...
Or magnate.
Or magnate. Whatever system was first talked about in 2016 and proposed as an option. So, we're, we're chasing rainbows and unicorns, and so the regional district and who should be developing the operating budget, or whether it's an operational expense, is really a mute point. The school leases a building, that building has to have operational system. The school might pay for the heat, the school might pay for other things, but the water needs to be sufficient to run. The heating systems need to be sufficient, and there's gone back and forth. There's a lot of documentation. There's emails from Aubrey about, yes, we understand, we might need to put a well, and that, the new well would become the responsibility of the town, but since the regional agreement is changing, we're going to hold off and, and see on that. Well, the regional agreement offered the opportunity to change the lease. The lease was not renegotiated, to my knowledge, when I left the school committee. It may have been negotiated since then, but I don't believe it has. You're still operating under the very old lease that did not change, regardless of what the regional agreement says or, or doesn't say, or, or you can argue over. So, yeah, there's a lot of ambiguity, but there's very clear 2016, 2019, 2020, but in 20, June 10th of 2020, Kelly Momberger, from the DEP Zero was her title, was very clear about who the owner of the water system, who was the responsible party for the water system. And there is a budget in our community to address the operational water system. We vote on it every year. So, who paid for water? Who didn't pay for water? Who reimbursed? Who didn't reimburse? There's a memo from Matt, I want to say in 2019 or 20, because we had to put some new pipes in, and there was an argument of who was responsible for those pipes, and he said, "We won't set a precedent by continuing to pay for things that make the water system operational." So, the problem is, about once a year, or maybe once every other year, the, the water tested poorly. Well, now it's happening more often, because for the last, since 2020, nothing new has been done, even though there's an operational plan in place. And one of those plans was that the town will continue to pay for bottled water, and when the question was addressed to the... And when the question was addressed to the member of the DEP was, continue to pay, are you assuming that they've started to pay? And her response was, yes, since 2020. So there's a lot of misinformation, but there's a lot of information that's not going forward. And so what is the difference? Because you asked the school committee, what's the difference between 2016 and 2023? The difference is that you have a Board of Selectmen who don't understand, and a town manager who doesn't think it's the responsibility of the town. That's the difference. Before, whatever the action plan was, those plans were put into place.
I, I got a handful more questions, and I'm not playing gotcha, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. And I'm kind of leaning in your opinion that, you know, if you come in and you, you rent a house, you expect to have clean water.
Correct. And if you don't, if the well doesn't work, you know it in your, in your, in your, you know, whatever assessment you have done of the house, and you know you've got it, you know, that's, that's on you if you choose to buy it that way, but you assume, if you're renting, if you're leasing a house, that's coming with water.
Right, and that's a basic necessity, and I don't believe you can charge for water. But need to say, the current system in 2010, that was installed, who validated that system?
It says, it just, this is from, a memo from Robert Ferrari of the
NWS.
Northeast Water Solutions.
Okay.
And he said, the, I'll quote, "The green sand filtration system was originally installed in 2010 and validated for operation in 2011." That's all it says. It doesn't say by whom, you know, I don't know.
I was on the board then, if you remember, from 2009 to 2018.
Yeah.
We were always responsible, meaning the town of Millville, were always responsible for any bills for filtration treatment. In that meeting, I can't tell you what meeting it was, but in that meeting with Bob Ferrari, he did say in the meeting, I may not say it there, but he did say in the meeting that he met with the DEP and went over the, the whole system, and they tested the water, and then they said, they gave it their blessing, and then that was it. Now, did they come, did they come to our meeting and say that? No, he told us that that was, and, and we had a letter from the state that it was commissioned.
That it was ready to go.
So the state commissioned essentially?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, did we meet with them ourselves? No, Bob Ferrari did, and Helen Coffin.
And I'm, you know, I'm guessing those records exist, but as far as I know, they're probably in the Old Town Hall still. You know, I don't know whatever came out of there, or if it came out of there, but, you know, so this predates Peter, it predates
Yeah, predates all of us.
It predates all of you, well.
The bro.
Except for Roland.
Roland's been here since the time.
But he probably don't have those old files or emails or whatever. If he's like me, they, you know, I'm not doing that anymore.
What, a seven-year retention by law, or is that 10-year retention?
Like that, yeah, but there's probably stuff.
You mentioned issues 2012. Who determined the issues? Was that Bob Ferrari?
So the, so one of the things in 2010 required that the system be monitored. That's one of the things that the town pays for is monitoring. So the monitoring, monitoring was done, and then in 2012, 13, it was, there's all of the, your oxidation's not good, and all of the, you know, data.
So there was an action plan developed, monitoring was determined to be necessary.
And, and then the next time there was an issue, it was an issue of it wasn't flushed enough, and so that's why we have the flushing every so often, and more flushing in the summer, because it was not in use, and, and then there was lead and copper, because it wasn't in use, and so when you turned on certain faucets that hadn't been used, because remember, we shut everything down, because we weren't drinking out of the, as Massachusetts people say, bubblers, or maybe Rhode Island, I don't know, but I didn't grow up saying that.
Waterfountains.
Waterfountains. Bubblers, you say, yeah.
Yep.
So they weren't being used. When you test them, there's lead and there's copper, you know, it just, the pipes are old, the building's old, if you're not using.
We repurposed the storage tank as well. We had to drain the storage tank and reseal the inside. I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time as well. They were concerned that there were chemicals in the tank where the water was being stored, so we drained over the summer the tank, blasted the inside, resealed the inside, like, and DEP was involved every step of the way.
And the town of Millville paid those expenses.
So in, in the fire suppression storage tank, right, the big tank outside, there's annod rods inside, that cuts the
Sacrificial anode.
Sacrificial, right, and they had never been serviced since the day it was built.
Whatever, yep.
And that, and Bob Ferrari educated us back in like 11 or 12, right?
Yeah.
That, that was supposed to be done, but when the school was handed to us by the general contractor, nobody educated the schools, uh, school department or the Millville Maintenance Department, that this had to be on the maintenance list, whether it's every year, every five-year increments, that was never done. Well, at this time, now the school's already 13 years old.
Correct.
So those were replaced, the whole inside of the tank was clean, resealed, like.
And that happened in December 7th of 2018 to December 17th, the storage ta, and that was a corrective action plan, like you needed to drain the, drain the storage tank, you needed to flush it, you needed to do something with distribution systems and, and re-flush again, and re-core or something. I, again, this is, this is not English to most of us.
And that wasn't the 100%, after we found out later, it wasn't the 100% cure.
Cure, it was not.
So that's when we put a potable storage tank
Correct.
To keep the fire suppression and drinking water totally separate.
Separate.
And as we know now, that still didn't make it 100% better. It made it better, but not 100%.
Can I add one more thing too?
Please.
Again, just fact finding, not finger pointing, sorry, not finger pointing at anybody, but I think after green sand filter went in too, there's probably another finding. And one of the things that I think Bob Ferrari worked really hard on was coming up with a, I'm going to call it like a manual of like what needed to happen, right? So like every day, Greeny had to come in and, you know, turn this switch and look at this lever, and then based on if it said seven, he added two, and if it said five, he took out four chemicals, and, right? So I think for a while, Greeny was fantastic, and I don't even know this man Greeny, but like, he's like a legend, right?
The legend.
He was a legend of just, he really took ownership. During the summer, he would come in during vacations, he would flush it to make sure that the same amount of water was going through the system. And I think, right before COVID, maybe, Greeny retired?
Yeah, well, so he's the one, right towards the end, before he retired, found the old, and I don't know if any of you remember, but the pictures of the pipes circulating and what the pipes look like down on deep, and so those pipes were replaced at the expense of the school district.
Okay, but I guess my point in, in talking about this Greeny legend is that I think he had a very good handle on, and, and took a lot of ownership and responsibility and pride in making sure the system was up and running and kind of knowing what happened. I don't know, because I've been very removed from this, but when Greeny retired, I guess I would wonder, I think some of these problems started coming up, and now I've heard things about there was too much chlorine added, or, you know, we're not, we're not flushing as much when the students aren't there. So I guess one question, not finger pointing, would just be, who at the school, or who multiple people at the school are taking that level of ownership for the system? Like, is there a daily log where somebody signs off that like, yes, I did this, right? I think it's very easy when you have a rock star taking care of things, and when that rock star retires, I'm sure there are other, you know, the floors aren't waxed as nicely, and, you know, just kind of those little levels of detail. So I don't know the answer, but I would just wonder on the school's end, who has that ownership at this point?
I don't know that, and I can't answer, because I, I also don't have that anymore, but I would argue that that's not the school's responsibility.
And that's an okay answer, but it needs to be somebody's responsibility, is just what I'm saying.
To answer, to answer that, yeah, somebody needs to be a licensed water operator, and yes, the state has guidance and policies and procedures that govern it. So when you take that exam.
Which he did, Greeny did get that certification.
He got that certification, so I, you know, looking at some of the metrics that came back from that presentation from Dr. Gullik, it looked as though there was some operator error. I'm not saying that's, that's the only error.
Right.
But it did look like, at first glance, there was some operator error immediately, but.
And if you go back and check Greeny, he probably didn't, he probably didn't have those things. So that was just an observation, like I said, from the outside, is like, where, where is that consistency or, or that level of double check?
Well, the state has oversight, yeah.
But the state's not there every day flushing the water.
And, and, and so what happens is, because that constant oversight wasn't there.
Correct.
It became haphazard oversight, and then you'd have problems, and then the next letter would, because any time the water's out of whack, sink, compliance, letters go home.
Right.
So when letters go home, it's not the, it's not the school district fear mongering, it's not the, it's like, here we go again, don't drink the water. So I can tell, I have a very snarky email that I, I found, and it was one of those things, they think the water's safe, let's invite the whole Board of Selectmen, their children, their grandparents, and their children's children, and serve them the water, and see who actually drink, like, because I, you could tell me tomorrow that all the problems are solved, I would not go in that school and drink, that's me. But I would not go in unless something was dramatically different, a new well, a new water source, a new whatever, I would not, and I have to believe I am not alone.
So just thinking to transparency, I did do a little bit of fact finding in this, and I'm rather kind of in the middle of this, but I did a little fact finding, and I reached out to some of my colleagues in the neighboring state, and I said, hey, this is what's going on down here, have you folks heard of this? And they said, quite a common occurrence, actually, especially in Rhode Island, especially with the city of Providence. And I went over the gameplay, hey, you know, use chlorine as an activator essentially to draw out the iron and then pass it, like, that's, that's, that's the fix, that's the solve. So I'm not, you know, I'm not, not saying I'm not a chemist, I'm not guaranteeing it's going to fix this situation here, but it seems like a pretty common occurrence, there's got to be a fix to it. So I do agree with you that, you know, there is some oversight there, and somebody needs to be a water operator licensed to do the day-to-day operation. I mean, the state has oversight, and if there's non-compliance, they do issue those demand letters, so, as Peter's gotten to know. Peter, a question for you, what is the budget for the line item for water here?
Off the top of my head, I think it's 48 or 60 grand, either, one of those two numbers.
Either 40 or 60.
For the annual cost, which will not be sufficient
So.
for current activity.
What have we expended? Do you know if we?
I don't know off the top, for this fiscal year versus last fiscal year.
So we have either 48 or 60. What was the cost on bringing in the potable water by tanker truck, roughly?
I only know of the cost of one tanker truck was, maybe it was two, in February was about 4,300 that the board didn't approve payment for.
How long does that last? Do we know?
That was just a few weeks, yeah. And then, so we haven't been presented with a bill that I'm aware of for the water, the bulk water that the board approved, 15,000.
So I, I'm just shooting from the hip here, and I'm just saying hypothetically, and I don't have any numbers in front of me, I haven't done any research, what if we scrapped the whole water management program and went with trucking and potable water? What if we just scrapped it? You know, could we cover it in that line item?
You still have to provide testing and all that sort of thing to keep mass DEP satisfied. They needed to approve the bulk water that came in in, in May. I think there was a delay, you know, there was a truck ready to unload. And they, there is testing, and there are certain requirements that they require. So I, I don't know, I don't know if that's a solution.
I didn't think that there was testing required for Mary Jude.
That's an economical solution.
Oh, well, if we look at the overall expenses, and like you stated, that we're going to go over budget just trying to fix this current water issue, well, before we get an overhead, you know, why not look at an alternative, let's just scrap it?
Yeah, so Andrew suggested that. He's like, why don't we just buy the water? And I was like.
I mean, it, it's a medium solution, it's not a permanent fix.
I, I don't know how long it lasts, it depends, of course, on the population. There were maybe 400 students at the end of last year, which was what, you know, they had bulk water from mid-May to the end of the school year, so I don't know.
Now, I don't know.
Seven weeks, eight weeks.
I mean, the children I, the children I had there this, this year, we have some administrators there, Dr. DeFago, we have some adult students, I don't, I'm not quite sure the makeup is. I mean, you know, could, could we just scrap the system now for the next year, start bringing in potable water? And then, because if we're going to go over budget trying to fix the situation, and we have a failed test for this quarter, my understanding? So.
We will have notices of non-compliance for DBPs
Yeah.
coming out probably after the
Overchlorination for, for the acids. So it's looking like we're going to have another failed quarter. So why don't we look hard at this, and then maybe think about scrapping it for, at least for this year?
I am open to any ideas.
We could, we could possibly provide that potable water by tanker truck, probably cheaper, to the staffing levels he has in his school for this year.
I, I agree, I, I, I don't know what the ramifications are if you shut down the public water supply. To re, to re-up it, I think you encounter, you're starting from scratch. I don't know what that means exactly. So you're, you're, I don't know, I can't answer that question. I don't know that Rich can, off the top of his head.
Getting indications from the audience that we should not do this.
Well, I'm just.
I, I, I think apologies.
No.
But I think we keep starting and restarting. Peter himself wrote a multi-page document when Representative McGovern came to Millville. And it had current solution, you know, it, it outlined the problem, we have a problem here.
Yeah.
And there was what we're doing currently, what we need to do in the near, what we need to do in the long, we're, we're at the long term, I mean, he clearly said, you know, two to three years, three to five years, we're there, and, and almost nothing on that list. I mean, I know there's discussions with other towns, like, I know there's, but it's like, we're starting the long term again every time we have the discussion. So I agree, there, there needs to be solutions, but they can't keep being like addressed now. Yeah, they can't be makeshift.
Well, that, that's what I'm trying to say, you know, here we are, going back down another failed test. We're operating the same system, we have a new user, it could be a learning curve, it could get fixed, but we don't really know. I mean, I'd like to have an answer by about January, so, so that we have a rough idea where we are heading into the springtime and summer.
Because I think you'd not only have to price out what it would be for the numbers that are there now.
What it'll be like with students today?
But those numbers need to return, like the
They're coming back. Yeah, we want them back, so, yeah.
Just.
So the failed test that you're alluding to, is that overchlorination due to water operator?
Error?
Error?
Well, yeah, and.
AKA, no, no mystery.
I don't think, so if I, if I may.
Do you want to do your.
I, I, I don't know.
Can I give an update, please?
We're speculating, but I, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we're, I think we're fortunate that Dr. Gullik stepped up and used his operator license to run that system without any interruption. He went in the very next day, and two days later, I mean, he's there running it, okay? That's my opinion, all right? So part of it, he, he provided an update, which you've read, which you're alluding to, yes, we have, the good news is, the, you know, on the DBPs, we have the halocetic acids, which is the one that we've been providing notices for, for some time. I think there's been nine violation notices that have gone out on that since 2016. In the testing, he's only got one result, there's two rooms that were tested, he's got one result so far. It came in at 43 parts per billion, which is below the, the MCL, the maximum contaminant level, easy for me to say, maximum contaminant level for DEPs. But the first quarter was at 120, so the average, we know it's a running four-quarter average, will still be over, even though that came in low. That's the good news on that one. The bad news is, for the first time, we're, we saw two quarters worth of the other one, total tri-halomethane DBP. Again, a result of too mu, too much chlorine or not, you know, improper chlorine dosage for the need, okay? And so the first two quarters were higher on that, and, but didn't average out in exceeding the MCL. The latest one came in at, I think he said, I have it here, 91. So it'll be above the MCL of 80, okay? So there will be a violation notice, which is the first one that's gone out on that particular disinfection byproduct. So that's a bad news item. But here's the key, is we have an operations team that's been put in place, right? It's functioning, they're, and what they've been doing, they're learning the treatment system, evaluating the filter backwash sequence and quantity, and operating the green sand filters. And they're, right now, because they don't have, you know, computer monitoring set up yet, that's to happen soon, we hope, they're measuring and changing the dose manually, okay? And that, you know, Rich is upset about the total tri-halomethane, but he's happy about the HAA5s. But the other challenge is, right now, you have things sitting for idle for But the other challenge is right now you have things sitting for idle for lengthy periods of time. And you have to, uh, the system he's concluded is oversized for the demand of this s- school, even if it were fully inhabited with students, let alone under the current conditions. So they are constantly having to drain off water to create demand. And he's measuring how much backwash there. He thinks there was too much backwash done and so forth. So that, that's the latest and, and there'll be more forthcoming as we go along here. Uh, more test results were taken today and delivered to the treatment testing laboratory. So we'll know more about the eight twenty-four lab results as well as today's lab results for September. As far as the, the uh, corrective action plan, which is in place, um, as amended from what, June thirteenth? It will be amended further by Rich will be submitted sometime this week. Um, and it's gonna talk about um, continuing to evaluate and assess, but the, the preliminary game plan is to continue with the chlorine operation, not the permanganate solution is currently in the existing corrective action plan. He's also identified the possibility of adding a particular type of small filter between uh, the affluent of the green sand filters and the storage tank, which will help remove additional levels of chlorine. And he's pretty excited about that. It starts to get into chemistry here. So I'm, you know, not my expertise, although I've had some in my past. The permanganate would be a last resort because that comes with its own issues of not only additional cost, but also you get water color. It's very hard to manage. You're gonna get pink water is, is, can be a, a byproduct to that. So that's on the corrective action plan. The corrective action plan by uh, the folks that uh, I use as consultants, including Rich as well as counsel, is, is not a binding document. Okay? It's, it's a plan and it's subject to change and it has been changing over time. Uh, and in fact, when it's submitted to DEP, they don't even, they don't approve it. They don't acknowledge it. We don't even know if they are acknowledging it, but it's there and they can refer to it and uh, and come back to the town if they don't like it. And nobody's disputing that the town owns the system. Okay? Regional agreement, terminology, different story about cost, but ownership of the system and the operation, that's the town. That's what we're talking about.
Peter, for clarification, when you see the plan is being submitted by Rich?
Yeah, on behalf of the town.
No, no.
Dr. Gullik, Dr. Gullik. I'm sorry.
Dr. Gullik is also a rich.
Oh, they're not adding.
I was like, wow!
I know. That's really impressive, right?
Dr. Gullik is rich.
Dr. Gullik, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Um, recent, last week, actually the week before submitted uh, Mass D E P asked about a, it's a survey that we had to complete, which is for their upcoming grant for the, ideally the water line from another, a neighboring town. So we submitted the survey in the timely manner that went in. Talked about PFAS remediation. There's a category of range if you don't have it engineered yet, and the range is one to four million to cover us. I have a meeting uh, with the Oxbridge Town Manager next week. They're very enthusiastic about working with them. At the same time, who knows where we go with Blackstone. Um, so we have sort of two parties to still play with, but I'm, you know, I think our best path, although it might be a longer line, it's a two-inch line is all that's really needed to serve uh, MES with the full capacity of students. It's not a six-inch line or anything larger. It's just a two-inch line. If you wanna broaden the scope of things, that complicates everything, uh, where we're just trying to solve the MES water issue. Right? And I, I, I watched the meeting, uh, the school meeting from last week. I watched that this afternoon. And I know there was some question about my questioning the order and existing order for providing bottled water of Mass D E P. And so I, I just, I questioned it because in my role, I had not seen any official document from Mass D E P that said, other than the email from Mary Jude Pigley, I had not seen an official document that says, you have to do this. Okay? So I had sent an email to Bob Bostwick back on the twenty-fifth and she got back, Mary Jude Pigley answered that email I'd sent to Bob where I'm asking, I said, she'd referred to uh, the town being required to provide bottled water if the haloacetic acids are out of compliance with standards. And I said, I'm unaware of anything specifically related to such a requirement or any ruling by Mass D E P. So I wanna be sure we aren't missing anything. So I'm just making sure. And she came back and said, you know, in response to that, the short answer is yes. And we, and she said, we assume that the town did not need a written order to comply. She further followed up, but please let me know if the town intends to discontinue bottled water, not provide bottled water. If that's the case, Mass D E P will issue an administrative order directing the town to provide an alternate water supply. And that order would have a three-day appeal. So that was just making sure. And, and so effectively, because of the broad latitude, like a board of health that Mass D E P has, if she says it, it is, I guess is the best way to, you know, read into that. But I just wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something on that. And that's why I questioned it at your September, uh, your, your July twenty-fourth meeting.
She left it open for us to make the, make the appropriate response.
No, she said, no, she said ahead.
Right. It has to be done. Right.
So now, and you voted on it.
We don't want administrative action.
No, and I don't want Mass D E P talking to us. And that's why I've said many, many times, I do not want Mass D E P coming down our street saying, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We already have enough engagement with Mass D E P on things.
And I sent her a summary of the operating team that we have in place, right? And she came back and said, thanks so much. This is very helpful. You know, we submitted a comprehensive operations plan by Dr. Gullik as the operator and they've got that. They don't acknowledge it, but they've got that.
So a couple more things for you, Peter, and I'm really not trying to do a gaugie here, but I, I gotta say, for a water operator to say that the obstacle to success is that the treatment system is oversized for the school? Like, I don't know. That just, I, I can't swallow that.
Well, he's working around it. So he's still figuring it out. That's part of what's going on. You understand that.
I, I, I get that. And I guess, you know, my next question is, is how many tests is he doing? Is he testing us frequently? Is he?
The tests are as required by uh, Mass D E P. That's all we're doing.
But wouldn't.
And so, so if you go back to the history that Jane was talking about, most of the bad stuff, like lead and copper, even the iron and manganese and all the other stuff, the, you know, as you saw in what's on the website, Rich's water quality summary. Okay? The system has been working great for that. It's these disinfection byproducts which result from not necessarily, and I'm not speaking derogatorily about any operators prior or current. But you have to manage that chlorine level properly. And if you don't, you're screwed. And if you don't, you know, that's probably not the right technical term. Forgive me.
You're in trouble.
If you don't, you're in trouble. Right? If, if you, and, and part of doing it well is you have to make sure you run the faucets for a period of time before you collect the darn sample as a simple thing. I mean, these are types of things we've seen.
So I get that, Peter. And I, I guess my concern is, is why aren't we testing it more regularly? Why are we not coming in with a graph and a scatter plot prior to?
You'll see that. You'll be seeing that.
But prior to the state mandated one. Why don't we have more data on this?
I, I think we're trying to get the data that we need. And you, I think you've seen, you saw eighty-nine slides worth of data practically.
I, I saw all eighty-nine, yes.
Right. So there was plenty of data. And that was the, that was the abbreviated version of data. Okay? So there, there is data and it's being reviewed, monitored carefully by somebody who knows that stuff.
So here's where I'm going with this, Peter. And I'm just saying, in good faith, Board of Selectmen and the school committee, if I wanted to reach over to the superintendent's office and say, listen, in good faith, we're gonna have a deliverable. We're gonna do something. I would want more data to come to the table to convince, cause I know, I know Dr. DeFago, he's a smart guy. He's not gonna believe me coming in there and say, yeah, it's gonna be fixed. Uh, yeah, we're gonna test it once, it'll pass. And it doesn't. I'd wanna go in with a scatter plot and say, listen, we've tested it uh, seven days in a row. It's passed four. We, we still have a learning curve. I think that's more viable than, you know, testing it once and having a fail. I, I just, I have a hard time swallowing that as a parent, uh, you know, as, as a taxpayer.
Rich, that's where I was going with that, kind of daily accountability. Is there a log that somebody at nine AM every morning has flushed, tested and recorded levels?
Well, there, there are requirements for numbers of visits by Mass D E P by the operators. What you're describing on a daily basis, yes, Greeney used to do that sort of thing. We, we don't have an in, on-site type of person. We may recruit somebody from here. And I know that the, the gentleman Matt that works and, you know, took over Greeney's job is a resource to be called upon. And Scott, who is the facilities director for the district, has been very helpful in ensuring that the transition of Rich and so forth has worked out well. But I can't answer it, it's cost, right? And, and the value of that is, you, you, if you, you seem to think that's valuable. We can have, I can inquire about that.
I just think data, history of data. And Peter, also, I know cost is a factor, but Blackstone has a, has a water system. You know, can we reach over to the, the town of Blackstone and say, hey, can we get some uh, some technical advice here? Can we get somebody to look at this from their town department?
Uh, they have a consultant that, an engineering consultant that they use that was not, that we reached out to regarding our engineering needs, uh, who preferred not to get involved because it could create a bit of a conflict. But I hear what you're saying. I.
I, I, I was under the impression that they were town-owned and operated. So maybe I'm wrong or I'm incorrect with that. I just thought that that'd be a good, uh, you know.
Maybe. And there, yeah, yeah. And that's a, that's a fair thing. I.
Before I'm done hammering you, Peter, and I know this is, I got a ton of questions here.
You're my favorite uh, member of the board of selectmen.
I, I gotta, I gotta ask, the last, I know, and I'm, I'm probably turning over more worms than you wanna turn over this meeting. I just, I, I know that the taxpayers and residents have a lot of questions and I'd rather rip the bandaid off. Let's, let's get it done now. But the last water operator, have we satisfied all of his outstanding invoices? Is he paid in full?
No. And we will have disputed bills and I prefer not to speak too much about the prior operator because.
Okay. So there's pending invoices. I just wanted to know.
That's right.
And you have reasons.
And they will be disputed. Yes.
Guess that answers all my questions. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, Jerry. Yuri Finn, forty-seven, Rose Street. Just a question, Peter. If we have a disputed bill, uh, it was my understanding that the previous water supplier was not gonna release information until the bill was paid. So have we not received that information?
We don't need that information. We've been able to move forward. So.
Okay. But that, so that information, even though it was required prior, now is not necessary?
No, I didn't say that. So we had, we, information has to be provided to Mass D E P that the op- prior operator wouldn't release, but we were able, our current operator was able to determine the bulk of the information necessary, sufficient to satisfy DEP's reporting requirements. How's that?
Uh, that's better. That's a better excuse. I, I did not understand that before. I thought we were waiting on that and that was a hold factor that we had relative to that. Uh, if I may say one thing, uh, and thank you for that. Same one thing on this. Uh, I think we need to fix the issue. Um, I, I'm done with this. This is getting to be really long in the tooth. Uh, we're going around and around and around and then back around again. Um, I've been watching this since two thousand ten, two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, well, before any of you folks were even here. Uh, we need to fix it. I think that's what I'm hearing from everybody around town. Fix the issue. Uh, the issue to me, in all due respect, Richard, uh, is not just a bottle of water and being able to get potable water, whatever. The issue is fix the damn thing. I think you started your assessment when you talked about Rhode Island, that there's lots of, this goes on in a lot of places and it's a fixable thing. I got a doctor over here, uh, Dr. Gullip that says, oh man, I can fix this. I got a book on it. And you've talked about how great the book is. Let him fix it. If it costs you X amount of money, fix it, but fix the damn thing. I think that's what I hear from the people in town. I think that's what they're requiring you to do. And I know that's what the school committees are looking for. Thank you.
So I'll just say that we're very much committed to fixing it. I wish it moved faster. But it's like, we're moving as fast as we can, I guess.
The, the computer and software that he talks about, Dr. Gullik talks about, the SCADA system. I've, I've installed all those all over the Commonwealth, the different water treatment facilities for towns, cities. That is the go-to system, really, pretty much nationwide, not just.
So it isn't this gentleman named Greeney. It's actually a computer system named Harry. Okay? So I mean, why don't we just put that in computer system?
Well, he's, he's getting it. It just takes time to.
Well, I know. But what I'm saying is back in oh-six, eight, nine, ten, there was opportunities. It sounds like we didn't do the, the correct pass-off on a succession plan with Greeney so that he knew what was gonna happen next. There was no control on that. It came through with it and there were higher levels and someone said, oh, nuts, it's too high. So they dumped in this and dumped that. It appears to me there needs to be a better succession plan. You talked about a maintenance issue that no one changed for thirteen years. It's outrageous. Someone has to be held accountable. Someone has to be held responsible. Okay? For the taxpayers of this town. We're not gonna allow mistakes just to keep happening all the time and getting backed up. And then have the situation we've now been, been credited with in this town. This is outrageous.
So when me, when me and um, the last board from two thousand nine to eighteen that I was on, when we found out about the Anor rods had to be on a, on a maintenance schedule, and I think it was like every five years. That's, Rob Ferrari was gonna put that in his um, system to, to inspect them every five years.
No, okay. And I, I'm not gonna argue. All I'm suggesting is that there should have been a maintenance manual that had that in there that called that out. To say that you had to wait thirteen years to find out it should have been changed in five years is irresponsible. Sounds to me like I've heard a lot about this Mr. Ferrari. I don't know him from Adam. But it sounds to me like there's some issues here where there's some missteps on things. I would think if I was responsible for the, for the welfare of the water within a community, I would make damn sure that whomever's coming in after the famous Greeney gets done, that there's an absolute seamless opportunity for this person to be, be coming in and being fully certified. That's outrageous that it's not. And that's what's caused this whole issue. We're trying to put two districts together and instead we got ourselves a flap in the middle of it. We don't need it. Let's fix it.
So, so what funded Greeney before? I know Greeney was funded as far as, you know, maintaining custodian for the school.
When Greeney was.
Oh, no, it wasn't perfect.
He only followed the instructions given to him by the water operator. You know, it still was. What, what changed is this whole argument on who's responsible. That's what changed.
So.
And, and the town of Millville not taking the responsibility.
Right. But where was, where was the fund from Greeney coming from? And let's put him towards the new Greeney. And, and get that person certified uh, with the state to operate it under the direction of Dr. Gullik. You know, on the daily thing. And then Dr. Gullik still, well, maybe not him, but his, you know, the team that he has, one of them will be there, you know, weekly to check on the, the daily operators um, processing.
Just point of clarity, Greeney was a non-instructional staff member of the school.
He was the head custodian.
Yeah, right? So he was on your payroll. And so I guess.
And he stepped up.
And I guess the question is, is would the school uh, be agreeable to training one of their staff? And I don't know. I'm not, I'm expecting to answer that now, but.
I mean, if it, I understand budgets are budgets, you know, and we all have them. If it adds, I don't know what Greeney spent a day on, an hour, whatever, right, to read all of it. If it adds an hour a day to your custodian's uh, work, then, you know, that would be something we could all negotiate. But in the meantime, like, like my former boss always used to say, let's fix it and worry about the, you know, the blame or whatever later. In the meantime, let's solve the issue and uh.
I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
I think Roland, too, the point that you make about putting that electronic monitoring system back in, cause I think there was one.
Well, there was one, but not that one.
Okay. So I think that will definitely help, right? And so maybe a Greeney isn't needed as much, but it still needs daily oversight, right? Did the electricity at the school blip and now that computer needs to be reset? Is, you know, the battery backup no longer, right? So it does, in my opinion, and I am not a water operator. Um, but I would think it needs a manual set of eyes on it daily. But I agree, automating as much of it as you can is a step in the right direction. But having a daily ownership of that system, I, I think.
Right. So the cities and towns, every single one of their pump stations sends report to the main station, you know, hourly. And it's always there. So uh, us, we have one station. So that is our main station. So whoever's there would, would be reading it.
But there needs to be.
It can also go to Dr. Gullik's office.
That's the plan.
That information. So he can watch it as well as whoever's in the building can watch it.
So you have two tiers of, of oversight essentially? So you have two tiers of, of oversight essentially? You, you've got the town, which it sounds as though we're gonna, we own it, and then you have the school apartment, which would have operational data.
Right. And, and the minute there's any parts per million of anything that they're monitoring goes low or high, they get an alarm at the, at the central station.
The automated response for that as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep, and they get the alarm before it becomes, um, you know.
Becomes absolute soliderity.
Where it's a, where it's a slap in the hand, you know, before that.
The only thing I would, I would caution all of us to is making sure that we don't set up the exact system we had before. No, it's not a chlorine, I don't mean the system by the, uh, electronic monitoring system. I mean the actual chemical balance and the chlorine and all the other things that we did that led to. Understandably, that they may have not been managed correctly.
Right.
I want to be really cautious because the first time we get that, you know, DBP notice that we have to send home to families, I think we're all in a sinking boat.
Yeah. But you know you're going to get, those are going to be going up to your, you know, the folks that are in the building for, just because of the quarterly averages, we can't change that.
I understand that for now. I'm sorry, once we.
Going forward.
Your future plan.
I don't mean right now. Yeah, I'm sorry, the year for now.
Yeah.
We're going to be real careful we don't just go back to what we had.
The, you, the corrective action plan, when was that issued from DEP? Is it, is it newer than May or June?
So, no, the, the one, it was, it was submitted to DEP by the town, written by Dr. Gulluck on June thirteenth.
Okay.
And that was an amendment to two prior versions of it.
Okay.
And so what's going to go out this week is an amendment to that one, which addresses the, the change of not switching to permanginate.
Okay.
Okay.
And is, sorry, I'm, I have to go. It's okay. Is there a timeframe for when the action plan has to be instituted, or is it open-ended?
It's pretty open-ended. We did have anticipated dates included in the corrective action plan, which was dependent upon a prior operator doing certain things. Those certain things weren't done, and, and certain things were, that were done, weren't done in a timely manner. I'll just say that, that way.
Is there, in the corrective action plan for Dr. Gulluck, is there action plan items for him to get done in a certain amount of time?
There is the existing action plan sitting there on the town's website that might, so I can't, I, I don't say off the top of my head what's there. There were specific things addressed by the, related to the prior operator. Now, in the, the iterative process that he's going to do, I'm not sure exactly how he's going to do the amendment to it, and I'll know more later this week.
But the question was the timeline, is that going to?
And I don't know that.
Are there going to be time posts put in there?
I, I, I don't know that.
I, I guess that's my issue as a towns person, that, that this, I'm afraid the kids, that if this continues on for months on end, how are we getting the kids back in that school?
Right. I, I think we're back to what Roland and Richard are, talked about was, you know, we need, we're certainly going to need several months' worth of activity where the Dr. Gulluck gets his arms around this darn thing, and gets his remote monitoring in place with a SCADA system. And, you know, and, and the operators get their hands dirty with it. We have new operators, you know, particularly a daily operator working for Dr. Gulluck, Dave Papali, and his, he has a person with him. So he'll, he'll be the daily visit guy, you know, not daily, but once a week he goes in, we have another operator who's experienced with the system going in one day a week as the current game plan from what I've seen. So, I, I mean, I'm not a water operator, so.
But there would be, if I may, there would be, with the business, I get you. There's a date that we would need to at least let the people know, I think you said January first, we have to, we'd be ever notified, uh, when you were talking prior on the water issue, so.
I'm not going to set a date at this point, Jerry.
Hear me out, hear me out, hear me out. What I'm saying is, we used to look at it and say, hey, by this date, something has to happen. I want to walk backwards to it and say, what goalpost, what fence post can we put in that'll get us to that position over here? Not holding you to a firm on it. I'm just saying, there has to be a certain timeframe of that goalpost, and you can always do backwards math on it.
I would look to the, you know, school district, that, because they have to make decisions on the subsequent year of moving students, and it's, right now, it's a temporary basis with anticipation of coming back by the beginning of next school year. I, I don't know of anything sooner at this point that there's any thought process.
So there would be a, a concerted effort of putting those dates together and walk backwards to say, we need the information in the quarters to click and say, we're okay, but it has to be done by Q one, Q two, whatever, to make it work. Is that fair?
Maybe.
It's a fair expectation, I can't come in.
I understand that.
Can I just add a piece?
Of course, yes.
So, when we left the May meeting, and I want to look forward, but I just want you to understand where my head is at, because I think it might help clarify some things in terms of thinking ahead and kind of how we do this. I love thinking, all right, this is great, we got a short-term plan, right, bulk water, we get that all squared away. Summer, we're going to change the chemistry, we're going to permanginate. There was this kind of lukewarm, will we do something with the beaver pond, won't we? Was a little bit like, do we need to, should we? There was a lot of kind of emotion about that. And then the long-range plan, or kind of, I think phase three, Jennifer, as you had talked about it, was the grant for looking.
Hooking into another town.
Right, yeah, like the long-term solution, the PFAS kind of issue and trying to get ahead of that.
Yep.
Um, that to me felt really different, right? In a good way. That felt like, okay, we got phase one, phase two, phase three, we have a direction. The piece that's, that's wearing me right now is it feels like we're going to phase zero, which is, let's just get back to where we were with the chlorine balance and make sure that that's good. Maybe put a filter somewhere in between, and maybe I'm, I might have this wrong, by the way, this is just what I'm hearing. Um, and, and then that's it. So I always think about, from, like I'm sure all of you, the safety perspective of the people in that building, but then how do I explain to the parents to get them to feel comfortable that we're making the right decisions and, and kind of, you know, ensuring the safety of their own individual children? And I'm wrestling with this one, because I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to say, trust me, we're just going to go back to how we had it before. It's all good. We put a little filter in, we get the chlorine balance.
And it's the same plan, if you look at the corrective action plan from two thousand nineteen, it's the same plan, like, in the short term, provide bottled water, in the long term, look to hook up with another town, like, and even in May, with that plan, the board voted not to pay for the water, like, like, where, what has been paid for, has, the operators have, we have a new operating system, we have a new doctor, well, he's not new, but now taking responsibility, Dr. Gull, but I feel like we go backwards five steps to maybe move forward an inch, and then we're backwards ten steps. So I don't, like, what's, what's, and what's going to be presented to DEP for the updated action plan, what's new and different or changing or a check marked that this was accomplished? This was done?
So, I wasn't aware that this looked like the two thousand nineteen plan, like, at all, because I, Richard and I, anyway, were not on, and Roland was not on. None of us from the poor is like, so I was like, hey, wait a minute, none of us were there. So, I'm sorry if this seems like, oh my God, they're just doing the same thing again, because when we heard it, I was like, this sounds pretty decent, so we're going to do the bulk water as we did, and then, um, the switching to permanginate. And the reason why we're looking at perhaps amending that is if we look at the operation of the dosing of chlorine that was not accurate. So I think that, that's how I would frame it with parents, is that we've been doing this for, you know, however many months it'll be when we're talking about putting the kids back, and the readings will be good, and there'll be that chlorine filter and all that in place, and the remote monitoring system that's in place. So I think that would give people confidence. And then I know the long-term hooking into a water, another water solution, another town, sorry, for water, um, that's moving like really well, actually. So Uxbridge has been very, very motivated to talk with us. Peter's going to talk with them next week. The next step after that was like, should we all go to one of their meetings to get, what is it, a memorandum of?
Yeah, of, of understanding or possibly agreement.
So we can present that with our plan to Mast DEP and say, this is what we're doing. So, um, thank you, Jane, for sharing that history, by the way, because I don't have that. So, I guess you'll, like, we're, what we need is time to do this and to show you the results and show you that it's working, and, um, as this has been going on for, I didn't know it was as long as it has, actually, but a while, I can tell by Jerry's exasperity. Look, it's been over decades, like, I did not know that. Like, I heard people said, oh, ten years anyway, but now it seems like even longer.
My daughter started there in ninety-four, um, kindergarten, and I, I, I don't remember if kindergarten she was able to drink the water, but she said for her second grade she was drinking bottled water.
Okay.
And then my son-in-law, who went there from when the school opened, he said he drank bottled water there.
Okay.
So, it goes back.
Okay.
It goes back.
So I hope that there's, so if this has been going on since nineteen ninety-four, I hope that there's some understanding that, like, one, we are working on this, like, I mean, I don't know, I don't remember this ever getting this much attention. I mean, you know, and I have been on the board since two thousand twenty, so when I got out, it was COVID times, so that was kind of like that disaster we were dealing with. Um, but maybe two thousand twenty-one, we should have been having this level of attention, and we didn't. So I'm sorry that we didn't put this level of attention in two thousand twenty-one. That's, that is our responsibility, just mine, actually, I'm the only one who was there, um, since then.
Jen, I would say too, like, over time, the issues have evolved and changed. You know, when I was on the board, I think the hot words were iron and lead, like, that was the issue, right? So to say this has been an issue since, I recall, two thousand and eight, um, I definitely agree with that, but I think that the issue has continued to evolve and to change, and that attention has been given to it as needed, maybe not as much as, as needed at all times, but you know, I, I think we just keep on, and, and we, I say the collective boards of selectmen over the past decade, and the collective administrators and executive secretaries who were in this position have always, um, made it a priority that as results came in, that we continue to monitor, and we made decisions at the time with the information we had available and the recommendations of water operators of DEP and of experts. I don't think anybody who was on any of these boards or sat in Peter's hot seat were water experts. I think we've had to rely heavily on Northeast Water Solutions and the DEP, and I don't think at any time that I'm aware of we ever got in trouble for being lazy, for not following recommendations, for ignoring the issue. I think that the issue is just very elusive and changing, and as you fix one thing, another thing, you know, happens, and it's unfortunate and it totally stinks, and I wish we weren't still here. But to say that every board or every administrator has done nothing is very unfair, because I think a lot of, um, attention, and, and even school committee and school administration, and like I said, that, that Greenie saint, you know, I think a lot of effort has been put into it. So I think the part that I take the most exception with is when people are saying nothing's been done, or nobody's been looking at this. I think the goalpost just keeps moving, and technology has improved over the past fifteen years, and the systems have changed, and there's the overall water quality that's coming in has changed. So I, I think, you know, a lot of, I, I think a lot of credit is due to you folks sitting here, taking the heed for what has been a longstanding issue, um, and I respect your, attention to this problem and the commitment that you guys have to continue to work on what has been a longstanding problem.
I, I remember, it was like around fourteen-ish, is when, um, Bob Ferrari started talking about manganese.
Yes.
I was like, all right, great, now we got something else, you know?
We just fixed the lead and copper, and now there's something else. I didn't even know.
But, like he said, like Dr. Gulluck said, that every time, you know, you introduce different chemicals, just like when we take medication, all these chemicals you're introducing to your body to heal some arthritis, you got seventy-five things that could happen bad, you know, as, as all the TV commercials say, so it's, it's no different, you know?
That's why you hire a good doctor.
So I, I was just saying.
That's why I don't take pills.
The difference is that previous boards took responsibility, and I think this board is taking responsibility, but after a very long time of, it's not our, our responsibility. And I think that's the difference, that to acknowledge that the water system is, is the town's system, a whole other problem.
No, I'm sorry, Jane, that we gave you that impression, but like at the May meeting, I thought, you know, we were like, yeah, we're, we're going to fix this. So before, and I don't remember really having this pointed up a conversation until the May meeting. Um, I don't, do, I don't remember how, about the water system. So I'm sorry if you were given that impression. I've felt a lot of responsibility for this, to be honest. And I wish it was different.
Yep.
So anything else on water?
No, I think we might be beating a dead horse at this point.
Do we want to, uh, roll in the discussion of the beavers with the water issue? Touch upon that real quick, if I could just make a comment?
Yeah.
So my understanding is that it may be linked to the water, but it's really a separate issue, because now it's impacting the athletic field. So we want to look at draining that swamp? Is that my understanding?
So the beavers is not the hill I want to die on, and I think I've said that, I don't know how many times.
All right.
So, like, if, if, if people want to take care of the beavers, okay, I will always pick kids over beavers, I will pick town assets over beavers. So, like, the reason why I was not, like, when we were looking at moving the beavers originally, and Mast DEP and Dr. Gulluck said, you know, you don't need to do this, and I was like, okay, but if there are other issues why we want to take care of the beavers, then we can take care of the beavers.
Yeah, it seems to me the protection of the athletic field.
Is important, and I want, fine. I, not the hill I want to die on.
So what's the next motion? Can we make a motion on that, or it's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda. Jackie's kidding, Jackie's keeping us honest.
She's keeping us honest.
So.
I got your agenda right.
The reason. Well, the reason why I had connected it, because it was, you know, a potential water issue.
So we do have to go to, to address the beavers, we have to go to conservation and other boards and committees, so it's not like we can just do it like that. So I think what might make sense is, Peter, if I can task you with something else, to reach out to conservation and say.
I got a meeting tomorrow night.
Perfect, okay, yay.
That's me.
Roland, you're the new ta, you're in charge of this, so be like, this is, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow night to put on our, another one of our meetings, because it's not on our meeting tomorrow night.
Great.
I'll just discuss that, we need to get it on our agenda to take care of the beaver pond up in, up at the school.
Great. Okay.
But just so we're clear, there's, there's no scientific evidence that the beaver pond as now described.
Right.
Impacts the MES water.
Right.
So you should have no expectations of any change in water quality.
Right.
If you eliminate the beavers and.
Correct.
And when we had a conversation with Mary Jude about that.
Yep.
There were three words she used in the conversation regarding the beavers in terms of removal of the beavers, which is killing the beavers.
Right.
The, the three words were unnecessary and animal cruelty.
Right.
That's her, those are her words, okay? So there's that. As far as other factors, like you raised this because you're looking at a Facebook post, which has some images, I understand that. I don't know, you know, recreation i- manages the fields and so they would have to be involved, right? Uh, conservation addresses what you do with the habitat and the wetlands and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yep.
A highway manages the drainage system of that location and whether it's kept clear. They are in charge of culverts, okay, so you have multiple parties involved. In the situation for which f- full facts are yet to be known. Your your comments and raising this are from a Facebook post, not from any factual knowledge that we have today, so.
Yeah, no, I I was not looking at for the water quality, I was looking at it because it was a concern for the athletic field, for the fields, right?
So I I think Kevin Gil- uh Delgizzi would be the key.
Yep.
On that. And uh there was also mention of the fire tower, firewater for the fire department, fire suppression. And so Chief Leard would have to weigh in on that.
Sure.
So there's just sort of multiple parties.
Yeah.
Who were. Were responsible for the areas that were, the issues were raised, so I just want to point that out.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. And on a going forward, if I could just say one thing.
Yes, please.
If I could, I'll read the description of the project that was in the summary, the survey. For Mast D P that had to go in by August thirtieth, okay? And it says, the town of Millville is looking to enhance or replace an existing well. In green sand media filtration system serving the Millville Elementary School. The system has had numerous D B P violations and has P fast levels averaging approximately fifteen parts per trillion. With more restrictive P fast regulations expected and yet nobody knows what those. Restrict, what those levels are yet. The town is looking to connect M E S to a neighboring public water supply. Construction of an estimated two mile long, two inch pipe with a possible pump station could potentially meet. The future facility needs of serving up to six hundred students and staff. The town is seeking funding to complete feasibility studies, engineering and construction. And they ask for dates, so in the this, so those are my words that I put in this thing. And the dates were a public water supply chosen by twelve thirty-one twenty-three, so that would mean. We're gonna deal with one or the other town by the end of the year, alright? Preliminary design by March thirty-first, final design by March thirty-first twenty-four. Uh, permits obtained by May thirty-first and quotes, and then commencement of construction July first. But you have to peg some information and that's pegged there and the cost unknown, but one to four million is the estimate and that's the range that they allow. So that's that's in there, that's the going forward then.
About one million per square mile roughly.
Per per mile of length, that's right, right, and maybe a pump station, it's a two miles, right?
So we mapped from the end of Kempton to the school, like going streets, it's one point nine miles. And then from or from Deprader and Lincoln to the school is one point four. And they'd be, you'd need a pump station for. Blackstone, which would be another half million, so now they're like, they cost the same.
Yeah.
So.
Here, that one to four million dollar, is that just feasibility or is that also?
No, that's the whole project. Feasibility through construction.
Yep.
Yep.
That's a two-inch P.
Two-inch pipe, that's right, just to serve the.
Yeah, you're not hooking on any time, any uh houses on the way.
Correct, that complicates.
If you're gonna hook onto other houses, it would have to be a three-inch pipe.
I don't know what the size would be.
That's three-inch pipe after that, I mean, you probably know more than I do, but I think the two-inch pipe will not allow you to tie in with any of those.
Right.
So you precluded yourself to do any of that going forward. And that's that's horizontal drilling you're talking about through some ledge, which is uh.
Me, that's right, so that would be part of the engineering.
That's always a, uh, that's always an interesting concept doing that, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. No, I know, yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, there's there's some of the ones that are going in with six inch. Yeah.
I mean, we don't have any way of.
Bringing other houses on board right now, and if you preclude that with the two inches because you take care of the school only. All your houses won't be tied in.
Right.
You can't do it. So your cost then ex- it goes up exponentially as to what that is relative to the size of the pipe you use. It's just a fact life, nothing other than I just wanted to clarify the two inches just for that, right?
Just for M E S, that's all.
Yeah, that makes a big difference.
Correct. If if the person that owns that property behind Romeo is here up there. Where they tried doing a subdivision, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, exactly, you're right.
Okay, and if if they say, oh, well, let us tap in, say, okay, Annie up. You want to tap in, we need three inch line, you're gonna pay the difference. Because it's in our bylaw that anybody that builds a subdivision. Has to bring the water in and that's why they didn't do it because they couldn't afford it, the whole, they couldn't afford the whole bill.
That's correct.
So that that would be a way of offsetting whatever grants we get.
Yeah, maybe.
If 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 indeed we do a three inch, then that subdivision would have to pay that difference.
Correct, thank you. All I wanted to make sure.
Because now they might have to in- increase the size of Oxbridge's or Blackstone's. Uh, water supply to us. Upgrade that add a well like they were talking, so this is all, any extra cost above a two inch. Would be on the responsibility of the general contractor or, you know, whoever is requesting that.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Anything else on M E S water? Are we good? So thank you for coming, this was helpful, Jane. Um. So and as I said, we are committed to working on this and fixing it. I know it's slow, painfully so, but that's. The nature of the beast at this time, and since you're all here, I'm gonna do my Oliver thing, one thing that we talk about with the water bills and so. Because we've talked about sharing expenses, I always think about kind of Oliver being like, please, sir, may I have some more and being like, please, sir, may I have some water? So that's why I don't want to think about kids being that way. So that's why we want to make sure we communicated that we're open to having those discussions. Around other bills, I don't know if you want to send them to us, we can have a conversation about that, but I. I don't know that that point has always made through, that we have been open to that conversation. I don't know that it's happened or gone anywhere, but we've been open to that conversation. So, alright. Alright, well, that's it on M E S water, I think we've had a good conversation, thank you all for coming. Alright, so next on the agenda, departments. I see nothing.
Good night.
Everyone's leaving, there's gonna be no public forum, Jerry, you're the last one standing, public forum.
Yeah, Chief Coop here.
He won a prize.
You have, oh, that's right, public forum, Chief Coop?
Want to say anything, Chief, come on up.
He's exhausted from the water discussion.
I know, so am I, I still want a nap.
He's ready to start digging that water line himself.
Oh, get a good workout, yes, please.
Can I just make one?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
You've got numbers of priorities here in town.
Yes.
Um, I I'm not gonna go over all the ones because I think you're fairly aware of them. Um, you need to pri- my opinion, my opinion, need to prioritize some of those things. So you know which one, we know this water one is a hot issue right now, understood, what's two, three, four, five and six, okay? Because if you don't do some priority on those, and in my opinion again, Jen, if you don't assign certain task force. To work on those priorities, they end up in the backseat.
Yeah.
And by the time you get to the drive-in, the ones in the backseat are asleep, you can't do that. You gotta work concurrently with different ones you have and assign certain people to work on certain projects. I don't know how else you can do it, you can do yourself.
I know.
You've got to be able to rely on other people, break it down into small bites and say, let's go and go after the police station, what are we doing? The marijuana thing down here by the Hope Street?
Yep.
Wha- what's going on there? Uh, you, we need to work on some of these issues and if we don't. It's just gonna be an issue, someone's gonna be talking about two years from now saying, well, this came out two years ago and we talked about the town bond. And you're gonna have to say, well, I just. You you need to work concurrently on some of these and prioritize the importance, my opinion.
Nope, that's helpful, that's a good discussion.
You know, speaking on that, Jerry, I, we still have an opening for the Public Safety Committee.
I noticed that and I want to thank you very much for for you taking responsibility of 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 being on it to begin with.
Well, you know, what can I say, the chief promised me a junior deputy badge.
And you can ring the bell, I heard you.
He actually is the one that requested to form the committee.
Well, we gotta prioritize issues, Jerry, you know, that's what we're trying to do, yeah, we're trying to prioritize issues and.
So I'll prioritize the ones I have on.
I mean, I, our our company, Energy, we we do um have a lot of uh. Developers that take old mills, old schools, old. Whatever, these historic buildings and they refurbish them and make beautiful apartment buildings out of them and. They do not touch any of the historic pieces of the properties, in fact, they improve them. And there's history, pictures all the way down the hallways, I won't re- mention their names. Because I don't know if they'll want to be interested in it or not, but the Long, I can see the Longfellow School lofts. You know, or anything, like the old U S rubber in in um Providence. That was, uh, we did that, we worked with them, um, I can just keep naming them, there's there's dozens of them around New England that we've done. And these developers make beautiful buildings out of these places. Where towns or old mills have moved to Mexico or China and left the buildings and they've bought them up and. And then uh in certain cases, they get grants and then a certain percentage of the apartments. Or lofts have to be for, you know, uh, low income.
Yep.
Section eight, and then the rest are, you know, just.
I I hear you and I agree with you, I just wanted to make that.
So that's something to to think about before the building falls.
Yeah.
Those are people.
I'd like to think about before it falls on the police station, actually, but I just wanted to bring that up, Jen, I think it's absolutely necessary here, we're gonna be talking about this season. Other issues for years, we gotta stop, we gotta stop this shenanigan.
There's so many things that we can do to.
Right.
Jerry.
You know.
What was that?
Survey.
That's your feedback form where you said the same thing.
I'll be damned.
I read it.
Did you write shenanigans?
Consistent, Jerry.
Well, I am and I, yeah.
Good.
So this is exact, Jerry said the, sorry, I was gonna wait to my selectman reports, but.
But did you write shenanigans?
No. He wrote assigning specific tasks to your other members.
Ah, give more roles to Peter.
That's, so I'll be assigning all the tasks.
Alright.
So maybe we should have that for the next meeting, actually, because we're missing two people.
You know, it it also says here, he's looking to volunteer in the Public Safety Committee.
Would have to go to special town meeting and get a vote to.
Yeah.
For the town to sell the property to a developer, but.
You have the right to do that, I believe, that the board of selectmen have the right to.
Sell that piece of property if they wish to, but that's, it's another discussion, I'm just, what you're saying, I agree with, there's multiple ways to look at it. I'm just saying, someone ought to be thinking about other things, other, and I don't mean this, Richard disrespectfully, the beavers in my mind. Are probably not the same height as the as the building falling on top of the police station, I don't, I got a, I got a different view of that. There are things I see in town that are absolutely necessary to make this town look like it's alive, even the center of town, we still have got that issue. Uh, all these things and yet I I sincerely believe that a priority list and working against those. Even if you're just moving the model a couple feet at a time, this is being worked on.
So I I I went down to the police station to talk to Officer Lanigan to, um, it was actually to pick up my my L T C. And so we're outside talking and he says, you know, when you drive in here as a new hire, looking for a job. And you come in for an interview and you see the abandoned playground. He goes, so we can't afford to to replace all the equipment, why don't we make that the public garden?
I mean, that's a great idea, or a dog park.
Or a dog park, right?
I like dog park.
And get all volunteers to go in there.
Somebody, somebody start working on the issues and.
I might know people with farm equipment that can actually turn it into a garden, you know?
That would be great.
You know, and I said to Officer Lanigan, good, you're the, you're the chairman.
No good deed, goes uncut.
You can bring it up and you can, um, you know, say, I I I said it, go ahead, he goes, I love this town and I, you know, don't live here anymore. Due to unforeseen circumstances with his personal life, he had to move to Blackstone, but. But he still has his heart here.
Close, Blackstone's pretty close.
Right, I I just just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, I was, I was going to bring it up, no, no, okay.
So there's all little things like that that we can do to improve the. I mean, first appearance is everything.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Okay, so announcements, senior center activities and library activities, Peter, over to you.
Oh, yeah, no, I just asked, you know, reached out to the senior center folks, you know, and Tina sent me their calendar, so. This Thursday, they have a lunch at noon, it's macaroni and cheese followed by bingo. Uh, on Monday, they have a senior lunch, so that might be the senior club, does that make sense?
That is the club, yes.
Uh, spaghetti and meatballs, it's thirteen, and chicken parm, it's thirteen bucks, you got a R S V P by tomorrow. They have line dancing and chair exercises next Tuesday, they're painting with Darryl Crow next Thursday. They got crafts on the eighteenth and I'll save the rest of the month for the next meeting.
Perfect.
Alright, uh, I reached out to the library, I didn't hear anything back, um. So I I it might, sometimes they post stuff up on the uh, uh, you know, on Facebook and whatnot, so look for those. They have been pretty active, but I think there's a change in leadership there in process, so. I don't know much more about that.
Alright, correspondence?
So i- in your file, which only came in today, so I think it's in your file. Is something from uh Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's responsible for prioritizing how federal funds are spent on roads, bridges. And transit in the city of Western surrounding thirty-nine communities. And there's a southeast subregion which includes Grafton, Millbury, Sutton, Douglas, Northbridge, Oxbridge, Hopedale. Upton, Blackstone, Mendon and Millville. And a select board member from Sutton and Douglas serve as. Uh, the southeast subregion representative and alternate respectively, and their terms expire September thirtieth. So this is a chance to the community officials of the southeast region. May now select a selectman from one of the, or select uh uh. Select board member um from the other communities to serve on that subcommittee, okay? And they're having a a virtual Zoom meeting on Thursday, September twenty-first to go over this. And they're looking to see if you folks are invited, uh, and that's in this packet, so you can read that more closely. Um, and who who of you, the group might attend that meeting? Oh, they'd like to know by the twenty-first, so, Zoom meeting. It's not that you want to volunteer and when you get to those meetings, sometimes, you know, the line steps backwards, so I'd be wary.
So it's on September, Thursday, September twenty-first?
Yes, it's the Zoom meeting.
That week I'm traveling for work, so.
Well, we 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 have two other chairs here, I mean, it's not something we have to file, make a motion on, right?
No, no, but I, this is info only and to the extent, what or more of you wanted to attend, let me know.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, so read that uh at your leisure. I don't have anything else on correspondence right now.
Alright, so we're gonna skip minutes since we're missing two members, so we'll do that next time.
Yeah.
So selectman reports, Roland, anything?
No, I just made it.
Okay.
I jumped the gun.
That's okay, Richard, anything?
I've asked pretty much every question that I thought I had tonight, so.
Okay, great, so the way thing that was, um, so it's funny that. Uh, this was one of Jerry's suggestion and feedback forms which we have, so if anyone wants to give us feedback. I would welcome engagement. Um, but maybe prioritizing things, so I have kind of a short list here. Um, and maybe we can pick something, I think we might try to bite off more than we could chew. Instead, maybe pick something smart like the park beh- next to the police station, like that's probably something that could be fixed in like. A month of weekends, like three, four weekends.
Valley about getting a dump, so to put the old equipment in.
Yeah, so let's, it's not on the agenda, so let's, but let's keep this, but let's um, but let's put that on there and um. I'll put that on the next agenda, we will put that on the next agenda, I don't control the agenda, I will take agenda items for any of you, okay? Town administrator report, Peter, anything else?
I just have two things, okay?
Great.
Uh, w- w- one, um, COVID has reached into town hall and we have three people out. Right now due to COVID, where on any given day, there's maybe six people here, so half of the town hall team. All of the finance team and part of the, one of the other teams are out due to COVID. It occurred, uh, the the men in the family relationships first caught it and then.
Yeah.
The women of the relationship who are the members of our team here. So we're trying to be cautious about it, I've asked Sherry to check with, you know, Board of Health in terms of whether they. Have any advice of the whole prior protocols, essentially the the protocol is. Five days after you've tested po- first tested positive, from what I understand. You then can go places wearing a mask, so that's what's where where things are at, so I just point that out, it's like, wow, how how that's happening here.
I know, it's crazy.
Well, the flu comes every year too.
Yeah, but these people are testing positive for COVID, so, and this, the the symptoms of the men were high temperatures and. You know, I don't know what else, the 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 women seem to be modestly healthy, I think, but I I worry about one or more.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, in particular.
We don't need an outbreak.
So we don't need it, so we're trying to be cautious, but we've not changed things other than if somebody comes to the door, they're gonna see people with masks on right now.
Yeah.
Um, and and that's their own choice, it's not like we've said, you gotta wear a mask, okay, it's a personal choice. The the other thing at the, maybe the next meeting you can talk about further, but certainly by the October fifth meeting. Um, the prior board, when it was just Andrew, Richard and Jen. Had extended lift, Jerry raised it, I had it on my list, lifted luxury has the host community agreement.
Yep.
And you had extended it through October fifth, okay? So, and I've reached out twice now over the last couple of months with no response and there's no action and all I hear. So I think what basically where you're gonna wind up, and we'll address that at a future thing. Is whether you want to take anything, do anything further and that may be influenced by if I ever do hear anything back. Otherwise, that host community agreement will become null and void.
Yep.
Okay, which means you have one retail license available. Okay, which means you have one retail license available for cannabis, should you choose to do that. But the rules are changing and have changed, so for, and the rules on, uh, uh, may, are the Cannabis Control Commission is trying to claw back on existing host community agreements, which the one we have, we get a three percent, um, you know, impact fee, plus we get, uh, additional, uh, three percent on state taxes, okay? So it's a, it, on future agreements, y- y- your only real financial benefit is the three percent tax that you get on top of that. You only can charge impact fees for the actual costs of impact, and estimating that or trying to identify that is gonna be administratively burdensome, should one do it. So in, in my view, the town has unlimited licenses for grow, but there's no financial incentive, because a grow is not gonna be selling at retail, and therefore, you're not gonna get the sales tax on that, okay, the three percent sales tax. And so, and all you get for impact fees is identified, you know, documentable costs, which again, identifying that's pretty burdensome. So there's little or no benefit from what, what I see and understand for a grow operation alone. Um, and there are all sorts of negatives if you happen to live near one, and the filters they've put in to process the air may or may not be working. So anyway, you, that, that's a separate issue going forward, but on Lifted Luxury, you will have to either just let it lapse or decide to take, uh, uh, some other action at your next meeting or the meeting following, okay?
I think it should be the next one.
Yeah.
Okay. So items aren't really anticipated forty hours prior to meeting? How are we doing? Not bad, nine o'clock. Um, so the next regular meeting is Monday, September eighteenth. That week, I am traveling for work. So if that's okay, I would like to move it to Monday, September twenty-fifth. Move it one week, and then we can hopefully have a full board. Is that okay?
It's fine.
Alright, so move it to September twenty-fifth. Okay. Alright, and I will make a motion to enter executive session by roll call. So I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law, C thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town and/or chair, so declares Police Teamsters Union Local One Seventy, returning to open meeting only to adjourn. Looking for a second.
Okay. Maybe, it's okay, he can take seconds.
Okay, um, any discussion? Sign in, I'll do a roll call vote. Roland Barrett?
Aye.
Richard Bremlist?
Aye.
You, you guys have the same initials.
Yes.
And then JG, Jennifer Gill, is aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you for staying to the end, Jerry.
Well, it's my pleasure.